All right, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back in session for City Council Bill 23-031, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my left by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We have Representatives from Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's office. We're here today for the Office of the Comptroller. Mr. Comptroller, I'm going to turn it over to you in one second. For those of you who have not been in chambers since the advent of our new technology, I don't know if that was the appropriate use of the word advent, but we'll take it. You have two buttons on your device. There's a button on the right that looks like a little person with a Wi-Fi signal. If you just, everyone just press that button for me, you'll notice the button lights up red and your ring around your microphone should be red. It means your microphone is on. When you're called on to speak, please make sure your microphone is on. When you are done speaking, please turn your microphone off because these things are very sensitive and they will catch breathing, sniffles, whispers, et cetera. Mr. Comptroller, before you begin, if you would please introduce everyone on your team that's with us today, first and last name and position, title, and then jump into your slide deck. And before you do that, how many, what do you have, like five slides?
I think we actually have 10.
10. How much time do you anticipate needing for your presentation before we jump into questions?
Well, as long as I don't forget the words to the song, I should be done in about seven, eight minutes.
Wow. I, okay. You guys have really done good work managing your principal. With that, Mr. Comptroller, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Councilman Burnett, thank you. For the record, I'm Comptroller Bill Henry, and I am pleased to introduce my team today. We have Celeste Amato, our Chief of Staff, Erica McLamie, our Deputy Comptroller. We have, do I have to keep facing forward or am I projecting enough? Casey Kelleher, Director of Policy and Communications, Michelle Derikot, Fiscal Officer, Josh Pash, City Auditor, Andy Mung, Deputy City Auditor, Michelle Josie, Director of Accounts Payable, Charmaine Callahan, Director of the Municipal Post Office, and Simon Etta, Director of Telecommunications. Let's see, and then I have to be prepared for the time lag from when I click to Agency Overview. The formal mission of our office, sir, is in the budget book and on the screen, but it can be summed up more succinctly by our unofficial motto, "We're from the Comptroller's Office and we're here to help." This year, we are excited to finally have our performance measures actually in the budget book. And, let's see, temporary performance measures were provided to this committee last year. We got some good feedback and built on it for this budget cycle. I will focus on just one or two of the performance measures for each department during the presentation, but we are happy to expand on any of them if necessary. All right, moving on to the next slide. Our org chart, as you can see, now reflects the newest addition to our office, Service 902, Accounts Payable. Next slide is, Service 130 supports the Executive Direction Team in our central office, which provides oversight for all of our individual departments as well as for our Board of Estimate staff. The recommended FY '24 budget now funds an Operations Officer 2 position focused on human resources that will bring us in line with other city payrolls of our size. Moving on to, there we go, Service 131. Audits is maintaining its current level of funding at $5.9 million. There are five new performance measures for audits in the budget book, but I want to focus on these two today because they cover different areas of our work. First, our Pre-Audits Department reviews grant agreements, grant awards, professional service contracts, and other items before they go to the Board of Estimates. We have set a goal of reviewing 75% of these transactions in 10 days or less. The second performance measure is our Performance Auditing Team makes recommendations to agencies in each audit report. While most of the time agencies agree with us, we wanted to track actual implementation. However, there are a number of factors that impact agency implementation of performance recommendations. For example, agency staff turnover, implementation that is partially or entirely dependent on other agencies, et cetera. These realities keep us from starting with the more aspirational number of 100%, but I'll say now that we hope to raise this goal significantly as we collect more data. Moving on to Real Estate. Our Real Estate Department is getting a new director, Mr. Eric Evans, who will be starting on June 12th, so he couldn't be here today. But we are happy to set up introductory meetings with any of you who are interested. I believe Councilman Dorsey has already taken us up on this offer.
Yeah, got me out. I'll take that.
Oh, okay, Councilman Burnett, we've got you. Councilwoman Ramos is also down for meeting with Eric Evans, and we will set that up as soon as he starts having a schedule. One of the outputs we are tracking this year, is one of our new performance measures, is number of lease and lease-related actions each year. Leasing actions include new leases, lease renewals, and lease amendments. This number will begin to reflect the fact that we are trying to move agencies away from annual leases in city-owned properties. We are instead shifting to inter-agency agreements that outline terms and service expectations and then just stay in operation perpetually until something needs to change. By the way, the information for this metric is incorrect in the budget book. That was our mistake and we will amend it for next year's budget book. The current information, I'm sorry, the correct information is on the slide. There were 66 lease and lease-related actions handled by our office, and as of May 1st, there have been 52 actions for the current fiscal '23 year. The other output we wanted to share with you is number of tax sale certificates sold. As you know, in May of each year, the Director of Finance holds an annual tax sale, offering the public the opportunity to purchase tax sale certificates on properties that have delinquent liens. Six months after the sale, the public can purchase unsold certificates through the Department of Real Estate. Moving on to Telecommunications. Our Telecommunications Department has been very busy this year, most recently upgrading the entire courthouse to VoIP service. The recommended budget funds two agency IT specialists. That reflects organizational changes inside telecom, including transitioning some contractual work to full-time agency staff. The first performance measure that I would like to highlight is, wow, can you, you can't even, can you even read that up there? Estimated cost savings from business service reviews, equipment audits, and contract negotiations. So each year, telecom meets with agencies to review their phone lines, cell phones, other equipment. We point out to them anything that hasn't been used in a significant amount of time and recommend cost-saving measures. This is an approach that we developed in the aftermath of an OIG report back in 2020. It's still up to the individual agencies if they want to discontinue any lines and save money, but we make a point of giving them all the information that they need to make educated decisions. Second, we are tracking overall VoIP system uptime. This measures the amount of time that a provider service is properly functioning and available to users. This number should stay at 99.9%, but when, if it starts trending down, that will be our signal that we need to invest in new infrastructure. For those following along on the cards, signal and telecommunications. Next slide, we'll be doing Municipal Post Office. There we go. A breakdown of the $240,000 referenced in the budget book under major operating budget items is up on the slide. One performance measure we've introduced is dollars saved from using certified mailing solutions. Previously, when agencies needed to send certified mail, they had to go through the U.S. Post Office. Now, through eCertify, this process has been digitized, saving the city $1.25 per piece of mail and allowing the agency to better track delivery. Another output we are tracking is total numbers of pieces of metered mail, meaning all mail that we deliver excluding inner-office pieces. And here, we have our newest department, Accounts Payable. As you recall, Baltimore City Voters passed a charter amendment last fall transferring Accounts Payable from the Finance Department to the Comptroller's Office. The recommended budget reflects this transfer. The performance measures have stayed mostly the same since last year. We are excited to share that a performance measure of concern to many council members, specifically number of days to pay invoices after agency approval, is definitely trending in the right direction. For FY '24, we have set a target of one day to pay invoices after agencies approve them. We also modified one performance measure from number of invoices paid to number of invoices paid excluding wire transfers. This doesn't change any of the previously reported data, but it just better describes the process by which we actually track invoice payments. But for clarity's sake, the previous data was not included in the budget book. And then, for this last slide, I wanted to take a quick minute to explain how an invoice actually gets paid. If you'll indulge me, we have a little song for this, which is, "I'm just an invoice. Oh yes, I'm only an invoice, but if you submit me to Workday Just Right, well, then I'm off to the agency where I originate, and I hope they approve me before I am late, because then I go to AP and I get paid, at least I hope and pray that I will, but today I am still just an invoice. They approved you, invoice, now you get paid. Oh yeah." It's sort of like that. Before Workday, suppliers submitted their invoices directly to Accounts Payable, who then sent them back to their respective agencies for approvals. Agencies either approved them or sometimes went back and forth with suppliers to correct issues, and eventually they sent them back to AP to have checks cut. But this system frankly allowed for multiple opportunities for invoices to fall through the cracks and get lost either permanently or until somebody complained. Now, invoices are submitted directly to Workday, where they go first to the contracting agency for review. The contracting agency verifies and approves the invoices or sends them back to the supplier for edits, but only approved invoices go to AP for review and disbursement. AP processes the approved invoice payment either by electric funds transfer or by check, depending on the supplier's preference. And so far, this part of the process, the part that actually happens in Accounts Payable, typically takes one day on our end. That concludes our formal presentation. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about our FY '24 budget, and we are happy to take any questions that you have at this time.
All right, thank you. Well, I'll just note, I sent my questions ahead of time and got lengthy responses ahead of the hearing. And just for the public, I asked about Accounts Payable Transfer, the invoice song that you all got to hear. I had a question about invoices, and then actuels around that, so I don't have any additional questions other than, are you still using typewriters in the office? You don't have to.
We are, we are no longer, we are no longer using typewriters. I believe we have one that we saved and are keeping in the back office until we can find one of those places that bronzes baby shoes but has a tub big enough to fit an entire typewriter in it.
I'd love to see it. Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm so sorry my colleagues missed that performance. Thank you. I'm sure you'll do it again sometime.
Oh, no, no, this was just a one-time performance for the council people who were able to be here for our hearing, so.
Gotcha, thank you.
I hope you enjoyed it.
So, on Accounts Payable, there was obviously a backlog before you got the department, so are you responsible, is your office responsible for the backlog? Are you still working through the finance and Workday and all of that?
We're still working through, although I think we're getting close to being at the end of the backlog. And I want to give full credit to actually our former Chief City Administrator, Chris Shorter, during his tenure was the one, back when Accounts Payable was still under finance, he acknowledged the backlog that they were facing and contracted for a big chunk of temp workers to come and help Accounts Payable work through that backlog. I, I think at one point, there might have been as many temp workers there as actual full-time staff. But they have mostly cranked through that, and we're hoping that between getting through the backlog and now having Workday up and running, we are able to more accurately assess what the actual resource strength needs to be in Accounts Payable to make sure that Michelle and her team have all the resources they need to meet that goal of turning an approved invoice into a check or an EFT in, you know, the next business day.
So are we, are we still using the temps? We don't need to use the temps with?
No, we still have, we still have a couple of them because we are still working our way through that backlog, and also, it's not easy to fill vacancies, or maybe I should say it's not quick, filling vacancies, which the Audits Department is also painfully aware of. But we will continue to use those temps until we are sure that the full-time staff are sufficient to keep doing the level of work that's needed without seeing the backlog start to form again.
Got it. Okay, great. I just, you know, was confused as to who was responsible, but, you know, all good. I have a couple of other questions, Mr. Chair. Since there's nobody here, I'm just going to go ahead.
I think everyone has conceded their time.
Thank you. I was wondering about the Office of Real Estate and the lots that the office owns. I think I, we asked this question last year, we do have a significant backlog, well, it takes time for DPW to get where it needs to go to mow the lawns, the lots. And what they had reported during their, actually, I don't know if it was their hearing or if it was Mr. Chair's hearing, about maintenance of lots that, you know, when they get a 311 and they go to an address, and even if they don't have permission, they'll go ahead and mow it, we do know that that does not happen. So, your, your process though is that it's your lot, right? So do you have a regular maintenance or you wait for 311?
Well, if it, if it comes in from 311, then the request usually goes directly to forestry or whoever, I think the, who's, who's doing the high grass and weeds cutting? Like, who's actually?
Well, so it goes to DHCD, it goes to DHCD first to get inspected, and then it gets to DPW to be able to mow the lawn.
We, when, when a request is made directly to us, we put that back out to the agencies and then we do a budget transfer from our office to pay for those. We got six requests for grass cutting and.
Last year?
Last year, and, well, technically, so far in this fiscal year. So far in fiscal, so far in fiscal '23, we've gotten three requests for high grass and weeds and, I'm sorry, six requests for high grass and weeds and three requests from forestry for tree removal and pruning. And we paid out a total of, we've expended a total of $14,800. Now, that, that doesn't, that seems low.
Yeah, that, all of that seems low, so.
We've, we've spent, let me, let me back this up and say, we've spent $20,500, I'm sorry, just under $23,000 on the three forestry requests. Oh, and we don't have individual charges for the grass-cutting requests, but we have a total budget this year, FY '23, of $73,055, and we have not yet gone over budget. So we are still paying for those as they come in, but.
That all seems really low, because you do have a lot of vacant lots.
I think that there's a good chance that 311 just isn't, oh.
Did you want to answer, Casey?
Yeah, just want to modify, well, three, so those are the requests that we track when they come into, for our office, so there's like nine for the past year, but if 311 gets it, then we are, at this point, we don't see that data. If, if you called in 311 to say there's a vacant lot, they just send it to the agency that's going to mow it. They don't, and they don't always send it over to us to let us know that they mowed it. And then, I think, the nature of that is because of a lot of our lots are also so small. There's a good example, kind of close to your district, on 21st and Calvert, of a chunk of seven parcels of city-owned land. Three are HABC, three are DHCD, and one is ours, and they're all kind of mixed about. So they just, when the, when DPW or another agency is mowing it, they don't mark off, oh wait, we just went over to the comptroller's side for five seconds.
Right, they don't know. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, another factor here is several hundred of our lots are effectively side lots, where they are easily mistaken for, you know, somebody else's property and somebody else, when they're mowing the rest of it, just also mows ours.
What's the disposition plan for getting rid of, I'm sure you do not want that inventory?
We actually, this is a little, this is a little sad. We actually had a great thing that we were putting together with HCD, where the Commissioner, Alice Kennedy, and our previous Director of Real Estate, Andy Frank, were going to have Alice and Andy's Yard Sale. And we, we were gonna put together this program under which we went out and marketed directly to the owner-occupiers in properties next door to our lots. And we would offer to basically sell them that side lot for a dollar, and we would take care of all of the costs of transferring the title, and even if they, and if they wanted to consolidate it with their existing yard, we would, we would do all that. And, and Alice and I had gotten as far as identifying different philanthropic sources to help cover the city's costs in that. Then Andy left, and we have to go through this with Eric and make sure that Alice and Eric's Yard Sale, which isn't quite as alliterative, but still nice, is still, is still going to be an option. But we do intend to move forward with that, hopefully, this calendar year, but definitely during fiscal '24.
How many lots is that?
Yeah, it was a couple hundred. It was a couple hundred of ours and a couple hundred of HCD's. It was under 1,000 total, but we would be happy to brief you on that when we get a little bit further along on, on that program.
Yeah, I think it's a good, it would be good, I just want to understand, I mean, because you've also got another, you know, 1,700 lots as well, right? So you, we're trying to figure out the, is it that much?
We have 1,300.
1,300, excuse me. I knew it was something close to that, yeah. And I would have, the last time I had a conversation with Andy about this, it was, you're trying to be collaborative with DHCD in terms of, you know, not just selling off your lot to some random person, but making sure there's a block-by-block solution. So, but is there any, to minimize the sort of acquisition issues? I don't, wouldn't you just transfer them or to DHCD so they're off of your books and they're part of DHCD's inventory? So it just is easy for DHCD to just dispose of the whole block?
We can do that where it makes, sorry. Hello. We can do that where it makes sense. Not all of the lots in our inventory are highly marketable, so it's, it's sort of block-by-block evaluating what they need, what we could add to their pool that makes sense for redevelopment project or not.
But if you want to have that conversation with HCD, we're also happy to have them transfer all of their properties that are going to be in this program to us, and we could just do it, but then that takes away the fun of having it be Alice and somebody else's yard sale.
Well, I'm not just talking about the side lots, I was just talking about all of your properties, not just the side lots.
Well, the Charter gives us responsibility over certain properties, and HCD isn't in the Charter, so I'm not sure if we can just walk away.
Oh, that's right, because the ones that you have actually are certificates that didn't sell.
Yeah.
Unless we foreclose on them.
Where it doesn't make sense to move them, move the agency jurisdiction, we are extremely collaborative with housing, so that's not holding us back from working with them on projects where our properties need to come together to make sense of a bigger project.
But Councilwoman, you have touched on an issue that I think I, I touched on last year and am happy to go back to, which is that in the Charter, the Department of Real Estate, under the Comptroller's Office, is responsible for city real estate.
Yeah.
And over the years, decisions made by various administrations, various mayors, some in the city code, some simply in terms of budget priorities.
Yeah.
Have created a situation in city government where multiple agencies are doing various real estate-related functions.
Yep, yep.
And, and that is confusing. There is, there has been a general willingness to cooperate among the administration, both the mayor's office and the individual agencies. And what, what the former real estate officer was focusing on was just trying to ensure coordination to the point where everybody knows what everybody is doing.
Right.
And while there was no effort being made to pull everything back under real estate the way it had been, there was definitely a willingness on our part to try to be a first point of contact, where if any of our various external stakeholders had questions about city real estate, we wanted them to be able to come to us so we could at least direct them immediately to whatever office or agency was actually, who was going to be able to serve them. And my expectation is that we will continue to build that relationship for the remainder of the coming fiscal year.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I, I'm familiar with the history of how that all happened. And, right. So, okay, well, good. I mean, I know there's a good working relationship, and that's really important, because in the past, that had not also been that way, so. So, going to a separate subject, I think I remember at one point in time, you're talking about doing a phone line audit to make sure that we're not, maybe you didn't, you're looking at me confused, that we're not paying for lines that we're not using?
I was looking at you confused because that was in the presentation for Telecommunications.
Oh, okay.
Was, that is the, let me go back.
I did come in a little late, so I do apologize for that.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, so that, one of the performance measures is estimated cost savings from.
Got it.
Business service reviews, equipment audits, and contract negotiations. So we continue to do that each year, and in fact, in this last year, do, in, in fiscal, well, fiscal '22, we have an actual of, we saved $767,719 from. from Director Etta's team, meeting with agencies, and sharing with them the results of those equipment audits, and the resulting decisions by agencies to shut off landlines that weren't being used, or to turn back in cellphones that weren't being used.
Great, great. I had, I'm sorry, I need to go back to real estate real quick. So I, I don't remember, and maybe I looked in the wrong place on your website, but it's all of the, the properties that the comptroller, I know it's on Codemap, we can see Codemap fairly well. But is it on Buy into Bmore and a couple of other places? So you're, all that is integrated in terms of, because I'm looking at Casey, who's nodding her head. All that is integrated, so if somebody is looking, and they're like, "Oh, I want this lot," then they can go, they make the first inquiry, and then, then they go, just to make sure that we have everything on the same thing. Okay, great. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, Comptroller, thank you to you and your team, who are a very rapid-fire hearing. We are now in recess until 2:30 for the Environmental Control Board.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.